Okay, we're going to begin today's public hearing, September 5th, 2023. Can we please have roll call? All right, team. All right, we're going to begin the public hearing. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
In the hall and will return in a minute. So can everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. And a vote. All right, this morning we have awards and presentations. We're going to start with workforce awareness proclamation. Adams County is investing in people's potential and providing them with the tools they need to succeed in the rapid changing employment world. Our workforce and business center offers a wide variety of services to businesses, job seekers, adults and youth. These services range from the business and job seeker workshops, job fairs, hiring events, paid internships and much more. Commissioner Pinter, would you please read the proclamation?
Of course. Sorry, getting also to read, I did not realize mine was up first. All right, workforce development month, September 2023. Whereas Adams County Workforce and Business Center is part of the statewide workforce development system in Colorado and whereas CNBC ranked Colorado the number four top states to do business and the number one in the nation for workforce development. And whereas Adams County Workforce and Business Center provided assistance to 1,008 employers and posted 3,331 job openings during program year 2022, which is July 1, 22 through June 30, 2023. And whereas the Adams County Workforce and Business Center assisted 5,291 individuals with services including job search assistance, resume critiquing, career counseling, referrals and resources to address barriers along with other labor exchange services in program year 2022. And whereas the Adams County Workforce and Business Center made an average economic impact of $46.8 million through finding people new and better jobs through program year 2018 to program year 2020. And whereas Adams County Workforce and Business Center exists to meet the challenges of our evolving economy, to meet the needs of our local businesses, connecting them with untapped talent and talent pool, untapped talent pools and enhancing opportunities for them to promote job quality. And whereas Adams County Workforce and Business Center is committed to talent development, ensuring all learning counts and providing opportunities for work-based learning to support the justice involved, new Americans, people of color, individuals with disabilities, older workers. And whereas Adams County Workforce Development Board aligns their strategic goals with the state plan to enhance regional workforce development and strengthen our talent pipeline and promote the state's competitive advantage. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaim September 2023 as Workforce Development Month and this has been signed by all of us.
All right. I'd like to introduce Jody Camrazel, our local area director for Workforce and Business Center.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for declaring September Workforce Development Month. We've appreciated all of the support that you have provided us throughout the years, but especially this past year. And today I have with me our vice chair of our Workforce Development Board, who would like to say.
Hi there, I'm Peter Bursette, Vice Chair of the Workforce Development Board. Workforce Development is a powerful driver of economic progress this September. It's exciting for Adams County to join the nationwide celebration of Workforce Development Month. It's an opportunity to recognize the efforts and impact of our workforce system to strengthen our economy and build pipelines to good jobs that help individuals, employers and communities thrive. Our workforce center provides no cost services, some of it been mentioned already, to give job seekers and employers a competitive edge. For businesses, this includes recruitment and hiring processes, education about tax credits and trading reimbursements, how to advantage, how to avoid and manage layoffs and separations and resources for starting a business. For job seekers, there are services such as career counseling, assistance improving resume and interviewing skills, connections to good jobs, training and educational opportunities, including apprenticeships, work-based learning programs and short-term certificate programs. From the most recent data, the annual economic impact of the efforts of the public workforce system for Adams County was thirty eight, over thirty eight million dollars. The return on investment was seventeen dollars and fifty five cents for every dollar spent and the annual median wage increase was more than fourteen thousand dollars per participant. Statewide Colorado's public workforce system had an annual economic impact of more than half a billion dollars. I do want to say thank you to all the partners across the talent pipeline as well for the work they do to support our communities. And finally, a huge thank, thank you to the team at Adams County Workforce and Business Center led by Jody and her team there. The work they do is absolutely phenomenal. It is second to none. I am constantly amazed and impressed with the work that they do there. And again, thank you commissioners for recognizing September as workforce development.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Pinter.
Thank you. And thank you to the workforce board. Thank you both to coming up and sharing a bit about your work. As we just finished up celebrating Labor Day, if anyone is unfamiliar with the history of Labor Day, the Department of Labor in particular has some really good write-ups on it. The holiday is rooted in the late 19th century when labor activists pushed for a federal holiday to recognize the many contributions workers have made to America's strength, prosperity and well-being. And that's highlighted by the statistics that we just saw in our own proclamation. And they even have a labor hall of honor where you can learn more about the men and women who have improved the working conditions, wages and quality of life for American working families. This work, Labor Day, and even the workforce center is rooted in access to good employment and to safe working conditions and to being able to improve yourself. We have a lot of labor partners and access to union through our workforce centers. And so I really appreciate you guys continually despite what sometimes feels like the hurricane force winds on the economy and the American worker always providing pathways to success and good jobs. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. It's also Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month and it is our chance to shine a spotlight on the contributions, the history, diversity and the diversity of Hispanic and Latino communities. That diversity extends right here to our dais where Commissioners Chaz Tedesco, a member of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and Lynn Baca, the first Hispanic woman elected to Adams County, sit up here with us. But this time I'd ask Commissioner Baca to please read the proclamation.
Okay, thank you Chair. So the proclamation is for Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2023. Whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by addressing, celebrating, excuse me, the culture, heritage and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America and South America. And whereas the population of Adams County is approximately 42.4% Hispanic or Latino, based on the most recent census estimates. And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. Whereas this year's theme is Latinos Driving Prosperity, Power and Progress in America invites us to celebrate Hispanic heritage by recognizing the significant strides of Hispanics in the economy, economic, political and social growth of the United States. It encourages us to reflect on all the contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future. And whereas many Hispanics serve as government employees, public servants, civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, soldiers, educators, journalists, first responders, pioneers in arts and science, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers and so much more. And whereas Adams County, Adams County's employee-led A Proud Affinity Group, the Latinx Professionals, provides a safe, supportive and professional space where topics that directly impact them can be safely and confidentially discussed. And whereas Hispanics continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to the culture, educational, economic and political vitality of Adams County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County, Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023 as Hispanic Heritage Month. It encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of the Hispanic community and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society. And it's signed by all of the commissioners.
All right, thank you Commissioner Baca. Is there anyone else who has a comment? Commissioner Tedesco.
I just want to say, you know, this is a special month and, you know, we, we always enjoy celebrating our heritage. You know, being adopted and not really having that background, that biological background to fall back on. I go back to where I was raised and who I was raised by, but I just wanted to, I don't want to get into that. I just wanted to get into this that we all share a background. Not anyone is 100% one thing. And I think that, you know, in the day and age of 23andMe and ancestry, we choose the backgrounds that we want to be in based on the life that we've lived in our ancestry and who we grew up with. And I'm very proud to have been a part of all the different aspects of my life and to celebrate this month along with any other month we're celebrating anybody. I'm very proud to be here and be at this dais and, and celebrate that. I just wanted to say thank you to Adams County for doing the proclamation this month. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Baca.
Thank you Chair and thank you Commissioner Tedesco. I'm honored to announce, it's been out on social media, that this year that Adams County and the Board of County Commissioners are supporting the first festival Latino here in Adams County at the Riverdale Regional Park. So that is held on October 1st. It's a Sunday, starts at 11:00 AM and it runs all day. So we're taking just a little bit of a different angle. We have Dia de la Familia, which is the Adams County Fair. So we're incorporating the arts, we're incorporating obviously music and food, but it's a, and a car show. So it's really a celebration of all here in Adams County of the entire journey. So what I've learned along this is that whether you're first, second generation Chicano, geographically where you come from in the United States or globally, that we all have our own journey and this is just a way to celebrate it and to lift the platform of Latinos everywhere here in Adams County and also here in the region. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, actually at this time, we also have five employees who would like to speak about this. You could please come on. Yeah, Eddie Valdez, please come on down. And then we have four more.
Good morning commissioners and executive leadership team. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak in celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month this morning. This month-long celebration each year means so much to me, my family and the Adams County residents. So thank you for affording me the privilege to speak as a representative of my community. First, it is important to me to highlight the importance of professionals like myself, Matt Rivera and Noah Bernal occupying the roles we hold in the county because nationwide only 1% of local government positions are held by Latinos. Yet we make up 25% of the workforce. I'm proud to represent you here today. I consider ourselves lucky in this county to have two county commissioners, our county manager and one department director identify as Hispanic. However, many times in my 18-year career in local government, I looked around and asked myself, am I enough? In my current role as Deputy Director in Human Services, I get to be a bridge of our frontline staff and elected officials. As a majority minority county and an organization that has 40% of its staff identifying as Hispanic, I feel it is so very important to highlight and be thankful for the amazing work our Hispanic team members provide each and every day for our county programs, operations and services. Thank you so much for those in attendance, watching online and to those busy at work throughout the county. I feel incredibly lucky to serve this community, our staff and our Board of County Commissioners every day. The weight of this position is not lost on me. I started as a caseworker and I watched our executive leadership at the time go to public hearing on behalf of our staff. And now I'm here representing those same team members today. When I think about what it means to be Hispanic, I think about the love we all share for our family's food, the beautiful music that inspires us to dance until sunrise and the ability to laugh no matter how challenging life can get. At the same time, I think about the strength it takes, it takes to live in some Hispanic countries and the even greater strength it requires to pack up your valuables, kiss your loved ones goodbye and move out to entirely new country to build a better life for yourself and your family. While I didn't have to do those things personally, a lot of my fellow Hispanic people did. National Hispanic Heritage Month provides the Hispanic people and in particular the Hispanic children with the opportunity to see, to see as well as here, that no matter their background, the possibilities for the future are limitless. They could be members of Congress, they could be county commissioners, or they could be government leaders. Latinos today continue to advance communities across our great county as small business owners, veterans, teachers and public servants amongst many other professions. National Hispanic Heritage Month allows us to recognize their achievements and their contributions. Hispanic and Latino heritage is deeply rooted in rich, diverse cultural legacy. The values of hard work and sacrifice, of faith and family and hope and perseverance are instilled in our core from a very young age. For me, it started with my grandparents, leading by example. On my mom's side, my grandma Naomi, granny as we love to call her, cleaned houses on her hands and knees to support her family. I watched her clean houses for wealthy people and then come home to take care of her own family. My grandpa Carl was a probation officer and had a long public service career. On my dad's side, my grandpa Joe and my grandma Placida also came from humble beginnings in a small town in San Luis, Colorado called Del Norte, where my grandpa worked construction while my grandma stayed home with the children. Early on, they raised their eight children in a one-bedroom house until they moved to Colorado Springs when my, my grandma became very ill. She passed away at a very young age when my dad was a young child. From there, my grandpa was the sole provider where my dad's older siblings took on a larger parental role to meet the family's needs. Following my grandparents were my parents. My dad worked for the city and county Denver for 34 years where he worked his way through the ranks and retired as a supervisor in the wastewater division. My mom worked for the state of Colorado, which became Pinnacle Assurance. She worked there for 37 years where she worked her way up through the ranks as well and retired as a marketing rep. I get my work ethic and determination from both. There and the audience today. I invited them this morning not to hear me speak, but to say thank you for all they have given me. Both of my parents grew up in the Denver projects, better known as low-income government. Both of my parents grew up in the Denver projects, better known as low-income government, government subsidized housing, and they both come from humble beginnings. Because of their hard work and sacrifice, I was fortunate enough to grow up in a nice neighborhood in southwest Denver. I have a lot of fond memories of delicious meals, conversations, and plenty of food that consisted of numerous hugs, kisses, and our favorite family Lee saying, "Good night, God bless you, I love you." My parents put my sister and I through college, and we are the first generation of college graduates, graduates in our family. While my sister earned her degree before me, I am thankful for that as she paved the way and taught me grit, perseverance, and the will to succeed. I am a proud girl dad and have three beautiful daughters, Mariah, Natalia, and Raquel. I truly believe that life only gives you what you can handle. While it, while it is challenging, no doubt, I believe I was put on this earth to raise strong, intelligent, independent Hispanic women. Together with my wife Vanessa, we raised our, we raised our girls to be passionate, educated, and driven individuals as we have fully acknowledged they will face two great obstacles in life: being Hispanic and being women. Luckily, they have a perfect role model, best friend, and lifelong cheerleader in their mother and my wife. I'm standing here today because of all of them. Their work ethic, their determination, and their continual support have provided me that foundation for my career long before I dreamed of a career in local government. I have devoted my career to helping the less fortunate, to those living in poverty, and making sure individuals get the right, the right resources and services at the right time to meet their family needs. I started my public service career while in college while working with underprivileged youth. After college, I worked for Arapaho County as a case manager and workforce and economic development. Over the last twelve years, I have worked for Adams County, holding several positions at our human services department. I started as a social worker, worked as a case manager, and provided contract, contract and fiscal support over two separate divisions. I have been in the deputy director role for two-plus years. I remember thinking, if I was ever given the opportunity to sit in a leadership role, I would be humble, continue to lean on relationships, and be a reflection and a sounding board for our staff. These values of mine are very important to me, and I hope our staff experiences these in my leadership daily. I fully realize that everyone doesn't get the same opportunities and support I've received. So this is my call-out. To those who identify as Hispanic and those who do not, let's lift up our fellow neighbors and colleagues, become a mentor, a mentee, network, share resources with peers, teach someone a new skill, give someone an opportunity that they would not typically have in their current role, and encourage and promote professional development. People often ask me, how did I get where I'm at and how can they do it? Especially those staff that identify as Hispanic. I admittedly tell them I don't have all the answers, but there's one thing I do know. Staying true to your values and, and your heritage is something that has never steered me wrong. Treat everyone like they're a family member. As the person sitting in front of you is someone's grandpa, grandma, mom, dad, sister, or brother. Challenge yourself every day. Push yourself outside your comfort zone. This is where that, this is where the growth happens. Be consistent. Show up to work every day, ready to do your best. Life can take a lot away from you, but your reputation is some, is in your control. Be accountable. When you say you're going to do something, make sure and you do it. Never stop learning, never settle. There's always something to take away from every situation, every opportunity. Self-improvement should be a daily occurrence. You are only competing against the person looking at you in front of the mirror. Finally, take chances. It may be scary, but be confident in yourself and know you may be knocked down and you make, you may make mistakes, but you will stand up and be better for it next time. All it takes is one person, one leader, one professor, one mentor believing in you. I was lucky enough to have that in Katie McDougall, the Director of Human Services. She saw potential in me, and I approached each day with the intention of proving her right. As one of a few Hispanic leaders in the county, I honor where I came from and the opportunities that have been given to me by looking for the next generation of leaders and providing ways to give them the same opportunities. I understand how difficult it can be to break through barriers. As a valued colleague said to me just the other day, as people of color, we must work at a hundred fifty percent and our margin for error is minimal. Although the barrier still exists, we are ancestors' greatest dreams realized. The Hispanic culture prides itself on working hard, getting an education, making an investment in ourselves and our culture, all while striving to provide a better future for our children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm honored today to speak as a Hispanic leader in Adams County, and I hope I represented all my fellow Hispanic people today. Thank you for your contributions, mi gente. Be proud of who you are, where you came from, your language, and the way you look. You are enough, and you are powerful. I want to close with a quote from Jaime Escalante, who was a Bolivian-born math teacher from the famous movie Stand and Deliver. One of the greatest things you have in life is that no one has the authority to tell you what you want to be. You're the one who will decide what you want to be. Respect yourself and respect the integrity of others. The greatest thing you have is your self-image, a positive opinion of yourself. You must never let anyone take that from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You had mentioned that you have some guests in the audience. Could you ask, could you introduce us?
I would like to invite our next speaker up, Victor Olivas, to the podium. Victor is my fellow human services colleague and has been with the county for three years. His current role is community engagement and presidency.
Before that, before Victor starts, who are the guests that you said you came with? Your parents?
My mom and dad are in the audience, my wife, my three daughters.
Thank you, Eddie.
First, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for allowing the time for our statements. My name is Victor Olivas Jr. I am the son of an immigrant from Mexico. My father has spent most of his adult life, if not all of it, in Adams County. He began working in agricultural fields, pretty much anywhere he could find work. Today, he's a proud business owner within the county. As said in the proclamation, we are here to celebrate the contributions of the indigenous, Hispanic, and Latinx community. I'd like to speak briefly on one of those contributions and how it impacted me as a new Adams County employee. In two thousand and twenty, there was a partnership between Adams County, AnyThink Libraries, and the Mexican Cultural Center to bring artwork of Mexican artists, Oscar Basara Mora, to be featured at one of the AnyThink Library locations in Thornton. This was during Hispanic Heritage Month and was also an effort to allow our residents to learn more about the artist, Mexican culture, and the Dia de los Muertos celebration. One of those pieces was also to be featured in the Human Services Building for a time. Around that time, I had just been hired and stepped into the Human Services Building on my first day. I believe that everyone can relate to starting a new job and feeling nervous and not really knowing what to expect, especially on their first day. One of the first things I saw in the building was the large Alabrije sculpture. In Aztec culture, an Alabrije is a spiritual guide for those that have passed on. This piece was titled Cholazo Dios Pero. Seeing the inclusion of this cultural piece in one of our county buildings told me two things. First, that my culture and identity was recognized and celebrated. Secondly, that this was a place I felt like I belonged and wanted to work at. With this proclamation, it is important to continue to recognize the societal impact that those of indigenous, Hispanic, and Latinx descent have had in our county, not only in the past and present, but how their contributions will continue to shape our future as well. Celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with, with this proclamation not only progresses Adams County's vision of being the most innovative and inclusive county in America, but also honors those who have worked to uplift the Hispanic community. Once again, I'd like to thank the Board and the community for giving us this time to make these statements. I would now like to introduce someone I have known for the last decade and in that time they have always worked to uplift our community, our county's Race Equity Coordinator, Joe Camacho.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Joe Camacho. I'm the Race Equity Coordinator. I too would like to start by sharing a little bit about my story. I also come from immigrant parents. I come from a history rooted in Mexico. I come from tacos and sopez, manolo and pozole. I come from, if it's not spicy, it's not food. I come from Saturday morning rancheras or cumbias, playing while the family cleans, and believe me, we all had to contribute. As a Latino, I am honored and privileged to be surrounded by rich culture, food, music, and traditions. Hispanic Heritage Month has a strong significance as it celebrates the contributions Hispanic and Latino communities have made to our country for centuries, unfortunately, often without proper credit or fair compensation. And as I raised two little brown girls, I want them to know that they come from beautiful traditions and hard work as well. As a Race Equity Coordinator with Community Safety and Well-Being, and as a Board Member of Juntos Colorado, our own LGHN chapter, my work revolves around making community voices heard and empowering our community as Latinos and of people of color. Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month is not just powerful, it's necessary. It's a step in the right direction for racial equity because it symbolizes Adams County's commitment to inclusivity and equity. So let this be our green light to continue to have dialogue about challenges and to celebrate our accomplishments. This observance is a reminder that racial equity is not just about acknowledging past injustices, but also about actively promoting a future where everyone has equitable opportunities and representation. It's about understanding and appreciating the unique experiences and talents of each community within our diverse county. It sends a message to our residents that we see the forty-two-plus percent of Latinos and Hispanics in our county. It sends a message to our employees that we acknowledge their hard work. It's a small gesture with a big impact, reminding us that diversity isn't just a slogan. It's a core principle for representation and uplifting our community. And I'd like to pass it on to Raquel Carpio, who is a communications specialist with the Communications Department. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I would like to ask permission to speak in English and Spanish.
You don't need permission.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead with my speech in English. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Raquel Carpio. I'm from Venezuela. And I have been working with the Communication Department since September two thousand and twenty-two, soon to be one year. And I have been contributing my more than eighteen years of experience in communications and marketing to the newly created Health Department. I'm a woman proudly born and raised in Venezuela, and I take my Venezuelan roots everywhere with me. I came to this country eight years ago to seek opportunities. Thank God to a lot of wonderful people I met through my journey on this country, including my supervisors who hired me. I found a full, independent life. In this diverse country, I'm a Latina, I'm a Hispanic, I'm Venezuelan, and a proudly Latina woman, a group that, by the way, is contributing firstly to the country's economy. The number of Latina-owned businesses has shot up from eight, eight hundred thousand to one point five million, and, and an eighty-eight percent increase, based on two thousand and sixteen report from the U.S. Department of Commerce. That recent surge marks the biggest uptick in female business ownership of any race of, or ethnicity. As of two thousand and sixteen, there were just under one point nine million Latina-owned firms employing five hundred fifty thousand four hundred workers and generating ninety-seven billion in revenue, according to this report. I would like to thank our predecessors with Hispanic roots who paved the way in social movements and public services and helped strain our culture and language in this immigrant-founded country. People like Cesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta, Sonia Sotomayor, Federico Peña, Ray Gonzalez, and our current county manager Noel Bernal, and of course, our Commissioners Lynn Baca and Chez Tedasco. My commitment is to continue my contribution, my contribution as a human and professional in this country that opened the doors of opportunity for me, to continue paving the way for success for future Hispanic generations, to defend my culture, language, and provide education about both, and to give others the opportunity to learn, to learn as well. Spanish is the second most widely spoken language in the United States. More than forty-one million people five years of age or older speak Spanish at home, according to the two thousand and nineteen United States Census. In Adams County, our population is more than forty percent Hispanic or Latino, the second-largest group. A large part of, a large part of that community needs public service in Spanish. So I'll go ahead and speak in Spanish for my fellows people in Spanish, who listen and understand in Spanish. Buenos dias a todos los Comisionados del Condado Adams. Mi nombre es Raquel Carpio. Trabajo en el Departamento de Comunicaciones del Condado Adams desde finales de septiembre del año pasado, contribuyendo con más de dieciocho años de experiencia que tengo en el área de comunicaciones y mercadeo, pero sobre todo aportando a la misión de diversidad e inclusión para el recién creado Departamento de Salud del Condado. Soy una mujer que orgullosamente nació y creció en Venezuela. Mi país lo llevo a todos lados conmigo, y vine hace ocho años a este país a buscar las mejores oportunidades de vida. Y la hora es que gracias a Dios y a muchas personas maravillosas, incluyendo a mis supervisores que me contrataron, he podido encontrar en este hermoso país. Este país tan diverso. Soy Latina, soy Hispana, soy venezolana. Soy una mujer orgullosa latina que es un género que por cierto está contribuyendo ferozmente a la economía del país. El número de empresas propiedad de latinas se ha disparado de ochocientos mil a uno punto cinco millones, un aumento del ochenta y ocho por ciento según el informe de dos mil dieciséis del Departamento de Comercio de Estados Unidos. Ese reciente aumento marca el mayor aumento en la propiedad empresarial femenina que cualquier raza o etnia. En dos mil dieciséis había poco menos de uno punto nueve millones de empresas propiedad de latinas que empleaban a quinientos cincuenta mil cuatrocientos trabajadores y generaban noventa y siete mil millones de dólares en ingresos según este informe. En el área de servicio público y de movimientos sociales quiero agradecer a nuestros predecesores con raíces hispanas que abrieron camino para que nuestra cultura e idioma pueda ser parte de la vida en este, en este país fundado por inmigrantes, personas como Cesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta, Sonia Sotomayor, Federico Peña, Ray Gonzalez, y nuestro actual county manager Noel Bernal, y por supuesto, nuestros Comisionados Chez Tedasco y Lynn Baca. Mi compromiso es seguir contribuyendo como ser humano y profesional en este país que me abrió las puertas de las oportunidades. Seguir labrando el camino del éxito para futuras generaciones hispanas, defender mi idioma, y dar la oportunidad a que otros también lo aprendan. El español es el segundo idioma que más se habla en los Estados Unidos. Más de cuarenta y un millones de personas de cinco años de edad o más hablan el español en casa, según el censo de los Estados Unidos del dos mil diecinueve. En Adams County, somos más del cuarenta por ciento hispanos. La segunda mayoría y una gran parte de ellos necesita los servicios públicos en español. Thank you so much for the opportunity, y que viva la Hispanidad.
Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to pass it on Norma Olivas. She's part of the Latin Professional Group in Adams County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. I am Norma Olivas. I started my career in Adams County ten years ago with the Sheriff's Office. And since two thousand and nineteen, I have been with People and Culture Services. My own story, like many others here today, is deeply connected with Hispanic heritage. My parents were migrant workers who worked tirelessly in these very fields in Adams County. Today, they are successful entrepreneurs, a testament to the American dream. My husband and children carry on the tradition of El Charro, which includes bull and bronc riding, trick roping, and the finesse of the Mexican reigning horse, all within state regulations, while I ride as an escaramuza, also known as a side saddle rider. This county's inclusivity has allowed us to embody the resilience and dedication that define the Hispanic culture. Adams County's mission is to serve the community with integrity and innovation. By proclaiming Hispanic Heritage Month, we acknowledge the contributions of Hispanic residents who have worked hard to make our county better. This reflects our commitment to integrity and inclusivity. Our vision is to be the most innovative and inclusive county in America. Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month as a step towards achieving this vision, it sends a message that we value all members of our community and embrace diversity and foster a stronger and more inclusive county. Today's proclamation honors our community's past, people like my parents, celebrates the present, myself, and paves a way for others, like my children, for a more inclusive future in Adams County. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or contributions for Hispanic Heritage Awareness Proclamation?
Commissioner, if I may.
Please do.
Couple of quick comments. These are not scripted, not planned. I think a lot of what was said here, I mean, it's my story. And I just want to mention a bit more on the community report message that I put out, that was put out last, was it last week, two weeks ago, where I did share a bit about my story. And I think the more you spend time with me, I kind of share glimpses and little idiosyncrasies about who I am, and some of those I've even had discussions with you all about, and certainly with the team. But just things that are a part of me, but that are really, that go back to my childhood. You know, I, I was a migrant farm worker at eleven years old, and I have the photos to show. And I don't, you know, that's just, that's just a big part of what defines me. I think what I want to share is that the American dream is alive and well. You know, in my household, in my family, we, you hardly will hear complaints about the state of affairs because in our, in our environment, my parents raised us to where we had to be self-reliant and take that bootstraps approach. And I have little twerks. I'll share one. I don't really own jeans. I have like one pair that I used to own just for fun because it was part of a Friday, what is it, Blue Jeans Friday, and we all give a dollar to wear blue jeans. But I get, you know, there's jokes that sometimes that go around, and I laugh at myself because I don't own jeans. I don't like jeans, but there's a reason for that. I don't like jeans because they're not as comfortable for me, but jeans remind me of my, when I used to go to the fields. When I used to have dirt go up my blue jeans, and I'd leave shafed by the end of the day with all that dirt that came up the pants throughout the day when it was windy and it was hot. I just wasn't very comfortable in jeans, and I just don't want to wear jeans. That's just where, it reminds me of backbreaking, hot work, and, and they're just out of my closet. But you have to know that part of my story. I'm also always very polished, very clean-cut. I probably speak without an accent. And guess what? We had to kind of work intentionally because Eddie made a comment about the margin of error. You know, my mom, every morning, made sure that we, she raised five boys and one daughter. We all had the natural haircut, el pelo natural, right? Always combed to the side, right? Always tucked in. You just didn't want to give folks a reason when you already had to stand out and work that much harder and be that much more polished. That polished approach has been something that I've been polishing since I was a child. I remember I was once, I think I shared the story, I was in a, in a bus one day, and I had a, I was in Michigan, and there was a young Anglo girl that looks at me and says, "Why do you, you dress weird." Well, I was in loafers, brown loafers, dockers pants, and a checkered or a thief shirt, like if I was going to a wedding or something. But that's how I dressed to school, and my brothers did the same. But that's because my mom raised us to just look proper, sound proper, you know, look the part. And that was just almost programmed into us that even though the Colorado culture is a bit more laid back, and I admire Chris for being able to come laid back. But for me, if I could come in a tie every day, I would have come in a suit and tie every day because that's just part of how I was programmed. So I just want to share some of that because that's a part of my story. I'm super proud of it. I work really hard. I don't take too many breaks. I'm always here till five or late. But it's just part of who I am. There's nothing about me trying to prove anything to anybody. I had to overcome imposter syndrome and so many issues in my own life. So there's a reason why I'm always striving. I just know where I come from, and I just feel that there's nothing that I cannot relent. And I'm also going to raise two Latina Hispanics, Latina Hispanics. I'm working hard today to set them up for success, to break barriers and pave the way to where for them, it's just like they have every chance that everybody else has. But finally, I'll just mention that while Latinos are becoming a more prominent group numbers-wise, numbers is just part of the equation. It's about educational attainment. It's about, you know, all the things and the resources that we provide. I benefited from that start. I went to summer school where I received remedial work in those areas where I was deficient, whether it was math, history, science. We need to make those investments. It's not enough to be a huge block. We have the potential to be a huge voting block, to be a huge, you know, marketing block. It's just that the investments in human capital are super important because there are systemic and structural issues. And we have to acknowledge that so that we can be, so that we can be okay with making those investments in the Hispanic community and every community that needs those types of resources. So I'll just, I'll just say that in brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this particular proclamation? Or we're very proud to participate. I'd ask that everyone in the first two proclamations and the third, stick around because we're going to do photos down below as soon as we're done. At the, Chaz, do you want to say something? Let's do.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to call out a couple of people. You know, I spoke before about not knowing my biological parents, but being raised in a Hispanic indigenous home. You know, we come from, I come from the era where you weren't supposed to embrace your background. You were taught not to, you know, you were taught to conform. You were taught to not live that, that background or that culture, that heritage because you couldn't make it in this world if you didn't conform. And I think that's been, as you were talking about your background ingrained in you. That was kind of ingrained in me, and, you know, if it weren't for my, the people in my life. Nazario Ramirez was my uncle, and he was a Air Force test pilot, one of the first Native American Hispanic test pilots in the Air Force. And, you know, when he got out of the military after conforming, he embraced his cultural and his background, you know, to the ultimate and became an artist and jewelry maker and just, you know, helped form AIM, which is the American Indian Movement. His daughter is Paula Sandoval, and I'm sure probably all of you know who Paula Sandoval is, from Denver. Paul and Paula Sandoval were, you know, one of Federico Peña's biggest supporters and helped him get elected and, you know, just took on and embraced the Hispanic community. So I grew up in that, that background. You know, there's people here in Adams County that have kind of raised me and, and given me some background that I can't tell you how much I appreciate Noel being one of them. Matt Rivera, I mean, even though we argue about whose chili is better, by the way, it's Pueblo Chili Fest this month. Just saying. You know, and Dennis Swain, you know, those people in my life, you know, working as an Adams County commissioner, just the, the ideas that they bring forward and the diversity that they bring forward and what we talk about and the stories that I hear today, you know, this is what makes Adams County. This is why I came into office, and that was to make change and be proud of that change for the time and the limited time that I have here. And I'm, I think, especially when we ask our employees and we see the feedback where we have over a ninety percent, you know, acceptance rate, and I think we've done a great job. And I think it's because of all of you and everyone working together to recognize each and every person's unique abilities, strengths, weaknesses, and be able to work together with everyone to make things happen. We set the, the, the vision, but the implementation is you. And that's what I'm so proud of, is that you have implemented on an amazing scale. And I appreciate you, and I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco, and thank you for everyone who's spoken. Those who haven't spoke but are still listening in their hearts and have things to say, please share them with each other. That's what this organization is about. And I appreciate the folks that I work with, both in the audience that are not here today and the folks on the dais. We're now going to the third proclamation today, some very important things today. World Suicide Prevention Day is on September tenth, serves as an opportunity for all of us to come together to focus on critical issue of suicide, which continues to be a major public health concern. Chances are, everyone in this room has been touched in one way or another with suicide. All of us in Adams County can create a more compassionate, supportive world for those in need. At this time, I ask Commissioner Tedesco to please read the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation: World Suicide Prevention Day, September tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas September tenth, two thousand twenty-three is World Suicide Prevention Day, and whereas the goal of, goal of World Suicide Prevention Day is to raise awareness about suicide as a preventable cause of death, increase knowledge of suicide prevention efforts to decrease the number of suicides in Adams County, Colorado, and to provide support to those affected. And whereas suicide is a global public health concern, affecting individuals, families, and communities regardless of age, gender, socioeconomic situation, or background, and whereas death by suicide is much too common. Worldwide, nine people per one hundred thousand died by suicide, or more than seven hundred and thirty thousand lives lost to suicide in two thousand nineteen. Nationally, fourteen people per one hundred thousand died by suicide, or forty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-three lives lost to suicide in two thousand twenty-one. In Colorado, twenty-two people per ten, one hundred thousand died by suicide, or one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven lives lost to suicide in two thousand twenty-two. In Adams County, twenty per one hundred thousand people died by suicide, or one hundred and eleven Adams County lives lost to suicide in two thousand twenty-two. Whereas each death represents a community member, a child, a parent, a grandparent, a colleague, a companion, each death represents someone who contributed meaningfully to others' lives and for whom the promise of their future was cut short. Each death creates a devastating impact to families and communities. And whereas we all have good days and bad days and face challenges with our mood and emotions, significant effort is needed to reduce stigma surrounding seeking help for mental health challenges and to foster a culture of open communication, empathy, and understanding to prevent suicide deaths and to support those who may be struggling. And whereas it is important to talk about mental health with someone we trust and seek professional care when we need it, just as we would for a physical injury. And whereas immediate support is available every day, twenty-four seven, through Colorado Crisis Services at eight four 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 nine three TALK, or eight two five five, or text TALK to three eight two five five to access a live chat available in seventeen languages. And whereas suicide is a public health issue that can be, can and should be prevented, and each of us who live and/or work in Adams County has a role to play to prevent suicide. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaim September tenth, two thousand twenty-three as World Suicide Prevention Day and supports the goals and ideas of World Suicide Prevention Day and recognizes suicide as preventable. Acknowledges the importance of working across county departments, municipalities, and community-based organizations to decrease the number of deaths by suicide. Encourages the people of Adams County to learn how they can decrease death by suicide within their community. Commits to focus on the prevention of suicide in alignment with the Adams County Health Department suicide prevention framework by decreasing access to lethal means, assessing accessibility of mental health resources, and addressing identified gaps as a community. Supporting service organizations to implement best practices to screen, refer, and treat those identified to be at risk of suicide. Providing training to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health challenges and increase capacity to respond. Strengthening supports for youth and build resilience and problem-solving skills. Reinforcing social cohesion so that residents have social support through both formal and natural community connections. Promoting and protecting the health of people in Adams County where they live, work, and play through all of our decisions. Acknowledges each of us can make a difference in someone in their darkest moments. As a member of our society, as a child, as a parent, as a friend, as a colleague, or as a neighbor, we can all play a role in supporting these experiences as suicidal crisis or these be bereaved by suicide. Signed by your county commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. At this time, we'd like to introduce Dr. Kelly Widenbach, Executive Director of the new Adams County Health Department, as well as Brian Mason, our District Attorney for the Colorado Seventeenth Judicial District.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Adams County Health Department. We all have mental health, and our mental health changes over the course of our life. Our mental health helps us determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. Everyone, regardless of gender, race, income, or religion, faces challenges with their mood, emotions, and behaviors from time to time. Some of us, through no fault of our own, face greater challenges than others. It's important to talk about our mental health with someone we trust and seek professional care when we need it, just as we would with a physical injury or ailment. Suicide affects every one of us. Every suicide is devastating and has a profound effect on those around them and on our communities. By raising awareness, reducing the stigma around suicide, and encouraging well-informed action, we can reduce instances of suicide within our community. Many people in Adams County will struggle with suicide at some point in their lives. The vast majority of those who have thoughts of suicide will not go on to make an attempt. And of those who make an attempt and survive, more than ninety percent will not go on to die by suicide later. Experiences of suicide exist on a continuum, from suicidal despair and thoughts of suicide, attempts and death. Far more people have thoughts of suicide and survive a suicide attempt than die by suicide every year. When looking at this data, it is important to remember that most people survive suicidal despair, and we can learn about and prevent suicide from survivors who have found supports and treatment options within our communities. There are things we can do collectively as a community to improve things for people who are struggling. There is hope. Please join us this Thursday at the Creating Hope Through Action Community Event. This event is a reminder that there is an alternative to suicide. We aim to inspire confidence that our actions, no matter how big or small, may prevent or may provide hope to those who are struggling. Preventing suicide is possible, and we are all a key player in its prevention. Through action, we can make a difference to someone in their darkest moments as a member of society, as a child, as a parent, as a friend, as a colleague, as a neighbor. We can all play a role in supporting those experiencing a suicidal crisis or those bereaved. Again, our event, the Creating Hope Through Action Mental Health Community Event, Thursday, September seventh, noon to six P.M. at Anything Right Farms Library in Thornton. At this event, we will be raising awareness, reducing the stigma around mental health, sharing experiences, and providing resources so all attendees have the confidence to take action to support others with their own mental health and prevent suicide. Attendees can learn how to support their own mental health and others' mental health, take action, take part in giveaways, enjoy snacks, free Kona Ice and Classic Shave Ice. They can also visit the Anything Pollinator Garden for contemplation, remembrance, and self-care and enjoy the acoustic guitar music by Jose Francisco Gutierrez. Now I'd like to pass it off to Brian Mason.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. The two previous proclamations were in celebration, things that we as a community can be proud of and can celebrate. This, of course, is not a topic that is, gives us cause for celebration. Every thirteen minutes in the United States, someone commits suicide. Every thirteen minutes. This is a major public health crisis, and it's part of the mental health crisis that impacts our entire community. Early in my term as District Attorney, we got a call from the Children's Hospital saying that they had ten, ten kids who had been admitted into Children's Hospital in a, in a fourteen-day period who had attempted suicide. And it was that phone call that made me think we have to do more about suicide prevention. At the DA's office, we created a hotline. There are lots of hotlines out there, but we created one for the local community to provide resources immediately. That hotline is still in effect, still operated by staff in our diversion office at the DA's office. We get more calls from parents than we do kids in crisis, but we're able to give them resources immediately, try to help them help their loved ones. There are lots of causes for suicide. Certainly, the biggest one is mental health and the mental health crisis. Another is access to guns. Children in particular, who know how to get access to a gun, when they are having a suicidal thought, that combination is lethal. And so we as public policymakers have many ways that we can try to prevent suicide. One of the most important is getting out the word, certainly to reduce stigma for mental health, but also to remind people to be careful, to store their guns properly, and to make sure that they are aware, particularly of their children's behaviors, that may cause them to need some help. I'm extraordinarily proud to be co-sponsoring the event with the Adams County Health Department this Thursday. We cordially invite commissioners, as well as all members of the community, to attend. There's going to be great resources there to try to prevent suicide and to bring attention to the mental health crisis and to reduce stigma. And with that, I thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for the board's work. And with that, I thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for the board's work to help reduce the stigma of mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, DA Mason and Dr. Widenbach. Are there any comments, Commissioner Henry?
After the last two proclamations, this is definitely a serious note to end with. I personally have experienced suicide. My brother, at the age of fifty-three, decided to take his life, and the family knew almost immediately, before we were even notified, that something was wrong. We looked for him, we tried to find him, we spent a day looking for my brother. Definitely, it was confirmed when a deputy showed up at our house to tell us that my brother had taken his life. He left behind a wife and a seven-year-old child, who would dissolve in tears every Christmas for a good five years because her daddy was no longer with us. He didn't get to see her graduate, he didn't get to see her go to college and become a therapist at Children's Hospital, dealing with suicide. So it affects family members, and sometimes we're aware of it, but we just don't know where to go or what help we need. So I encourage anyone who feels that you have a loved one to sit down and talk to them, have a conversation with them. We knew my brother had issues, and we were concerned about it, but we never, as a family, talked, sat down and talked about it, because it was something that you just didn't talk about. So please, 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 if you know someone that is definitely having concerns or issues, to do that, to call the hotline and sit down and talk to that loved one and let them know how much you need them and how much it is to have them in their lives.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Any other comments? Commissioner Tedesco, Emma Pinter, then Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you both for being here. One of the things, I completely agree with what has been said by all the remarks from the DAS and then from public comment as well. This is such an important issue. I don't think there's anyone sitting in this room whose life hasn't been touched by suicide, either by a close family member or a close friend, or something in their own personal life that has impacted them. And so I'm so grateful that we have a public health department dedicated to making sure that behavioral health is considered first and foremost in examining public health and community. It was one of the many reasons we founded a public health department in the first place. Our first, my first sign that our regional approach was not working was actually before the pandemic, when we had a series of unfortunate suicides in Adams' twelve-school system. And we, as a board, convened, and we reached out to the other counties, and honestly, the response was, "That sounds like a U problema." "We're okay." And it really left me, for many years, feeling disturbed and unsettled, and there's more we can do. I'm very proud that this health department has taken that mission so seriously and has integrated access to behavioral health in all the work that you're doing, because it is critical for public health and it is something necessary in our community. I'm proud that our new Senator, Michelson Janay, has had a priority and that we can claim, in Adams County, a senator who has prioritized creating the I Matter Program, pioneering telehealth, access to healthcare across the community, and making sure at every turn, there is free, accessible, language, inclusive, public health as well, have the conversations with each other.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. You know, I just want to say, you know, Brian, thank you to your office and all of your personnel for everything you do, you know, dealing with this. We, you know, do this proclamation once a year, but you really deal with this on a daily basis. To our health department, you know, I'm just going to say, you deal with it on a daily basis as well, both before and after, you know, and I just think that, you know, the work you guys are doing are making, is making an impact, you know. I want to say, I come from the military, I've seen people take their lives out at sea, I've seen them, after they get out, take their lives. I've worked with groups like Warrior Now and Donald Malloy, for veterans, if any veterans are listening and maybe need some help. That's a great service, and they do an amazing job. They're partners of ours. You know, the Semicolon Project, which is why I have a tattoo on my arm, is because that I have witnessed that and experienced that in my family, with a very close family member, and, you know, the Semicolon Project is something that I work with on a, and, you know, not a daily basis, but I'm always pushing people to that project because I think that they're a great resource, and I'm hoping that Adams County partners with them and does some more work with them. You know, we all have a responsibility and a role, and that is to watch out for each other, and watch out for those changes. They're small, they're minute, but they are changes, and every single one of us can recognize those changes and see what's happening in people. Don't ignore it. Don't say, "Oh, it's just a, you know, bad day." It's not a bad day. It's a serious issue, and the longer it's left to fester, the easier this becomes to make a decision like this. And if we watch out for each other, like we do in Adams County, which I'm very proud of, everybody here is very attentive to each other and always ready to step up and help another in need, I think we can make a bigger difference. But to our departments, thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we're going to be coming down. How about we start with you, since you guys are standing right here? We'll start with the photo with you, and then we'll go, we'll go to Hispanic Heritage, and then we'll finish up with workforce photos. Thank you.
Yeah, look at Brian. Uh, one more, Commissioner Tedesco.
Oh, yeah.
Jody still here?
I'll send to Jody. I'm Joel. Okay, thank you. Yes, period. I'll put on my name. I know I'm a patient. All right. Here you go.
We are back, and at this time, we go to citizen comments. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
We do not have anyone signed up today.
All right, we don't have anyone signed up today, but nevertheless, there's still open time for folks who did not sign up that would like to speak, public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Not related to the land use hearings. See none? All right, county commissioners, any comments from county commissioners? Yep, we said a lot. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? We have a motion, and?
Second.
And a second, and a vote. Consent calendar is approved. Moving on to new business, county manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have three items this morning. The first public works item, y'all were briefed on recently, so it'll be familiar. It is a resolution approving an amendment, Amendment One, Change Order Number Five to the Agreement between Adams County and Huedig Excavating Incorporated, in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred dollars, for the York Street Phase Two, Seventy-Eighth to Eighty-Eighth Avenue Project, Amendment One, Change Order Number Five, two thousand and twenty-three point two four seven. Brian Staley will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. So Amendment One is being presented in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. This change order is necessary to remove debris piles that were illegally dumped on county-owned property. This property was acquired for the project to provide additional right-of-way. The piles were tested and discovered to contain asbestos and hydrocarbons. Due to the contamination, the illegally dumped piles need to be removed and disposed of in conformance to practice as approved by the Colorado Department of Health, of Public Health and Environment. Change orders one through four were zero-dollar change orders, so with this change order, if approved today, the total project award will be twenty-four million, seven hundred and three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and nineteen cents. The construction inspection team and I are on hand for any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from the board on this matter? All right, see none? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve is presented.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Item two is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Life Support Behavioral Institute in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for family time services for Adams County Human Services Child and Family Department, RFP MR two thousand and twenty-three point four four five. Katie McDougal is presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Katie McDougal, the Human Services Director. We're asking for approval of the contract in the amount of five hundred thousand total from the time period of August of two thousand and twenty-three through May of, May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-eight, for therapeutic visits. This is eighty percent federal dollars and twenty percent county funds. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Okay, see none? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve is presented.
We have a motion to approve? And a second, and a vote. Thank you very much.
And finally, it's a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Express Employment Professionals in the amount of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents for subsidized employment program services, RFP two thousand and twenty-three point four three seven.
Good morning, Commissioners. Still Katie McDougal, Human Services Director. Subsidizing through the RFP process, Express Employment Professionals was determined to be the vendor that best meets our need due to their experience operating subsidized employment programs. We are asking for the approval of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents for one year to serve seventy-five participants in employment services. The funding for this is eighty-five percent TANF and fifteen percent county match. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? None? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve is presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, and a vote. All right, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Anything else from the county manager? Okay, county attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would ask that we go into executive session today pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute two thousand and four, six, four oh two, four B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding county ordinance powers.
All right, do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, and a vote. And that passes. We will have an executive session later. Okay, this time, anything else from the county attorney?
No, thank you.
Okay, how much time do you guys need for the land use hearing? Five minutes, or do you need ten?
Five minutes.
All right, we're going to take, we'll do ten-minute break. Thanks. All right, we're gonna take, we'll do 10-minute break. Thanks.
All right, we're going to reconvene the September 5th public hearing. We're moving to the land use portion of the hearing. We'll hand it over to staff.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Leila Bajlon. I'm a senior long-range planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you this morning is PLT 2023-19, and this is Grasslands at Comanche filing number seven. So this request is for a subdivision replat to combine two existing lots that were previously created in filings one and two of the Grasslands at Comanche Plan Unit Development. Provide just a little bit of background on this request. So these properties have became have came in front of the Board of County Commissioners recently. So this request is for a property owner to build a home on the same lot as a proposed home occupation. So one of the lots within this request was the site of a community facility. It was an equestrian center that the citizens were not utilizing, and they essentially gave their rights up to. So the developer has found a solution to sell this lot to an individual that is looking to do a home occupation on the site. They are proposing to run a cabinet-making business on this site. And this amendment did come in front of the Board of County Commissioners and was approved recently to allow for this lot to be used as a home occupation. One of the conditions of that approval was prior to commencing the home occupation, a lot-line vacation to combine the subject property with the lot to the southeast, which is a vacant lot, must be applied for by the applicant and approved by the county. The two lots are within different filings of Grasslands at Comanche, so therefore, a lot-line vacation could not be done, and the applicant had to do a minor subdivision in order to combine the two lots. So this request is essentially the applicant just trying to fulfill the condition on their amendment. Provide a little bit of context of where these subject parcels are. This is located roughly four miles north of the Strasburg. It's located to the west of Strasburg Road. And as you can see, there is the community facility that is built on one of the lots, and then the lot to the south is vacant. The current zoning of the property is planned unit development. As mentioned, this is in the Grasslands at Comanche Plan Unit Development, which was originally approved in January of 2008. It's a total of 402 acres. It was approved for 118 residential lots, a 17-acre school site, and then 210 acres of conservation reserve. And this planned unit development is set up to be similar to the A1 Zone District. So the lots here are similar in density and character to A1, so they have a 2.5-acre minimum and then 150-foot minimum lot width. The future land use designation on the two parcels is residential low. The residential low, future land use designation would not have any impact on this request since we are combining lots and not separating lots, creating additional lots here. And then all of Grasslands at Comanche except the parks and open space, and then some agricultural small scale, which does represent the A1 Zone District as well. So the criteria of approval for a minor subdivision final plat includes that the request conforms with the subdivision design standards, that the applicant has provided documentation that demonstrates that there's adequate water supply and adequate sewer service for the proposed subdivision, that any soil or topographical conditions have been identified, that there's adequate drainage infrastructure in place, and adequate public infrastructure, that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and any applicable subarea plans, that the request is consistent with the development standards, and finally, that the request is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. So this shows the proposed final plat that was submitted by the applicant. This would remove the lot line in between the two existing lots to create one 11-acre lot. It is important to note that this green box here, the mailbox kiosks for the entire development are located on this parcel, and an easement has been placed on this parcel to allow for everyone to still have access to their mailboxes on the site. Here are a couple images of the site. This is looking to the east. You can see Strasburg Road off in the distance. And this is the existing equestrian arena facility that was built as a community facility. However, it has not been utilized, and the applicant is pursuing this amendment and subdivision to allow for an individual to propose their cabinet business on site. This is looking to the southeast. Again, you can see Strasburg Road in the distance. And then you can see some existing homes that have been built within the Grasslands at Comanche Plan Unit Development. These are large acre lots that have a minimum of 2.5 acres per lot. So during the referral period, staff notified all property owners and occupants within one mile of subject site. We did not receive any public comment, and we sent out a total of 46 notifications. We also notified several referral agencies throughout this process, and we did not receive any comments of concern on this request. This case was heard at the Planning Commission on August 10th, where the Planning Commission recommended approval, five to zero with 11 findings of fact, and one note to the applicant. There were no questions or concerns by the Planning Commission, and then there were no members of the public there to provide comment and support or opposition to this request. So staff today recommends approval of the subject request with 11 findings of fact and one note to the applicant. And I do have the findings of fact and notes on additional slides if the Board of County Commissioners would like to see them. And that concludes my presentation this morning.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff on this matter? I don't see any. Is the applicant here to speak on this? Please come on down and state your full name and address for the record.
Chadwin Cox, Western Engineering Consultants, representing the applicant. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Ms. Bajlon, for a very thorough presentation. This is the last step in the journey of the equestrian building at Grasslands. I know we've been here for the PUD amendment before. So that was previously heard and approved for the home occupation cabinet-making business. This filing, as Ms. Bajlon presented, eliminates the lot line, which then brings it into compliance with the condition of the PUD amendment, whereas the home and the home occupation will be on the same lot. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Available for any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? No, I think we've been on this journey with you for a while now. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, in the public? See, and back to the board for some action. We have a motion. Looks like we have Commissioner Pinter.
Move to approve PLT 2023-19, Grasslands at Comanche filing number 11, with 11 findings of fact and one note to the applicant. Second?
We have a motion in a second and a vote. All right, and that passes. Congratulations. Good luck. Thanks for sitting through the whole thing this morning. Yes, absolutely. All right, next up. Do you guys need time, or can we jump right in? You ready?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Cody Spade. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department, and I'm here to present the case before you today, PRC 2021-7, 8121 Quebec Rezone and Conditional Use. Case before you today has two separate requests, the first being to rezone approximately 3.6 acres from Agricultural 1 to Industrial 1, and a second request for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage in excess of 100% of the building area. Here's an aerial view of the site highlighted in yellow. The site is just north of East 80th Avenue and between Quebec and Pontiac Street. And a closer aerial view of the site, something to note, there are no buildings being proposed with this application. However, there is an existing building on site, which in the past has been used as a single-family home. The applicant is proposing to renovate that into an office space. Here's a current zoning view of the site. As you can see, the northern lot is zoned Agricultural 1, with the southern lot being Industrial 1, with the entire site being highlighted in blue. It should be noted that the rezone request is just for that northern lot from Agricultural 1 to I-1, while the conditional use for outdoor storage would encompass the entire site highlighted in blue. You can see that there is also Industrial 1 lots to the south, as well as some Agricultural 1 to the east, and Commerce City jurisdiction to both the north and west. And here's what a proposed zoning view of the site with that northern lot being rezoned to Industrial 1. It should also be noted that that northern lot does meet the lot standards for Industrial 1 Zone District, including the lot size and lot width. And the comprehensive plan view, the entire site is has a future land use of industrial low within the county future land use plan. And as noted before, the jurisdiction of Commerce City does surround the site to the north and west, and their future land use designation for this site as well is general industrial. In reviewing a rezone case, the criteria that shall be considered is that it's consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan. It is consistent and complies with the requirements of these standards and regulations, and is compatible with the surrounding area and harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. And when reviewing a conditional use, the criteria that shall be considered is that the use is permitted in the zone district, consistent with the purpose of the standards, complies with performance standards, is compatible and harmonious to the surrounding area, and has addressed all off-site impacts, is a suitable site with a convenient and functional layout, and provides adequate services to support the use. And here's a conceptual site plan that the applicant has submitted. The applicant has worked with staff on a number of improvements to the site, which include designated areas for that outdoor storage to keep the site neat and orderly, as well as designated parking, a paved drive aisle, as well as landscaping, and a privacy fence along the perimeter to mitigate that outdoor storage use. Again, they plan to renovate that existing building into an office space, as well as make improvements to the sidewalk and the road. And here's the landscape plan that was submitted by the applicant as well. And here are some photos of site conditions. The top photo is looking north along Quebec Street, with the photo on the bottom looking south along Quebec. And finally, we have a view from Quebec looking west at the site. During the referral period for this case, we sent out 241 notifications to property owners and occupants in the surrounding area, and zero public comments were received. These referral agents did respond with initial concern. However, the applicant has worked with those agencies to alleviate those concerns. During the Planning Commission hearing on August 10th, 2023, they voted 5-0 to recommend approval with 12 findings of fact, four conditions precedent, four conditions, and one note to the applicant. Staff does feel this is consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan, complies with the requirements of these standards and regulations, complies with the performance standards, and is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval with 12 findings of fact, four conditions precedent, four conditions, and one note to the applicant. Here are the recommended findings of fact, and the recommended conditions and notes are as follows. The applicant shall submit and obtain final approval for required site engineering improvements, including onsite grading and drainage and road improvements. Building permit for the conversion of the residential structure to an office shall be obtained. Required site landscaping shall be installed and inspected in accordance with the approved landscape plans. And the applicant shall receive a notice to proceed from the Department of Community and Economic Development. Written proof that all conditions precedent have been satisfied shall be required prior to receiving this notice. The recommended conditions are as follows. The conditional use permit shall expire September 5th, 2033, and if a notice to proceed is not issued by September 5th of 2024, conditional use permit shall expire, and a new application would be required. Development of the site shall conform to the landscape plan submitted and approved with the application. No outdoor storage shall exceed the height of the fence. And finally, the recommended note to the applicant is that the applicant shall comply with all building zoning, fire, engineering, and health codes and regulations during the development of the subject site. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? I do. What does the Irondale Subarea Plan say about this particular area? And that was done by Commerce City, I know.
Yeah, I believe that is industrial as well.
Do we know that for sure?
I do not. I can look that up.
And did Commerce City have, what were the comments from Commerce City?
Commerce City did have comments. They questioned at the beginning of the application whether or not this site would be annexed into Commerce City. There is no additional water needed for this application, and therefore, the applicant decided to go through the county process instead. And we have worked with Commerce City throughout the process to alleviate any of those concerns. And within their future land use as well, this is slated for general industrial uses.
Got it. And they do or do not have, you said the applicant doesn't have an intent to annex into the city. But how are they getting their water again?
They currently are receiving water, I believe, through a well.
Okay. Any questions from? Yeah, yeah. Would the applicant like to come down, please? If you would, please state your full name and your address for the record.
Good morning, county commissioners. My name's Lauren Richardson. I'm here on behalf of Vialobos Concrete, Inc. Thank you for hearing our project, and thank you, Cody, for doing a good job on our presenting this project. I did want to mention that I believe it is South Adams County Sanitation and Water District is, yeah, that's where they get their water.
Not through well.
Yeah, I apologize. That was way early in the process. It's been a while. All right. So our very first slide includes some quick information. As Cody mentioned, this project includes two parcels. The northern parcel is the parcel we are requesting to have rezoned to Industrial 1. Both parcels are owned by Vialobos. Okay. Second slide, we are requesting rezoning for the northern parcel to be changed to Industrial 1 to better fit the land use. The southern parcel is already zoned Industrial 1. The conditional use permit is required in order to have additional outdoor storage on the site. I'd like to reiterate that there will be no concrete manufacturing on site. The outdoor storage will be items that are manufactured offsite. Our third slide shows the conformance to the surrounding zoning, as Cody mentioned, and the current land uses. Most of the site is surrounded by industrial and/or industrial land uses, zoning and land uses. The project's conformance to the Adams County Future Land Use Map shows that the northern parcel is identified for industrial use, which supports our request for rezoning. The proposed site plan includes site improvements for landscaping, privacy fencing, sidewalks, designated parking, and a paved drive aisle. The new proposed access is to move traffic via Pontiac Street, which we have pointed out there. There are existing buildings, as Cody mentioned, that will be converted into office space through a building permit. With the site square footage at 255,906 square feet, the required amount of parking is 26 spaces. The submitted site plan shows 26 spaces, 25 standard parking stalls, and one ADA van accessible parking stall. Our sixth slide shows the illustrative landscape plan for the property. A block panel fence will be placed around the property behind the landscaping, so the public can see the landscaping. And this is an illustrative drawing of the proposed access with the landscaping. And these are the recommended conditions and notes directly from the staff report. We agree with the staff's findings of fact and the conditions mentioned in the staff report. And thank you very much for your time reviewing our project, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the team? Commissioner Tedesco?
So I do have a quick question. And let me tell you, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I like the, you know, the fencing and, you know, the conceptual, you know, imaging. I just have a question for you about the landscaping, because we as a county always ask that this landscaping get put in. Most of the time, it's always put in. What are the designs behind keeping that landscaping alive? Because too many times, we ask for that, and we don't put in there that you have to have the ability to water it. We don't put in there that you have to have the ability to take care of it. We don't put any of that in there. So they put it in, they meet the quota, and then all of a sudden, everything dies, and we don't see anything. So I'm just asking, what is the criteria? What are you guys planning to do to keep that? I mean, you're not, you're in a very industrial area, but there are neighborhoods, neighbors surrounding this facility. And so I'm just wondering, what kind of steps are you taking to ensure that it stays alive and meets what we're trying to ask you to create?
Yes. So to make sure that the landscaping does not die, since that would be a large investment by Vialobos anyways, we are going to submit an irrigation plan, as well as the landscaping, to staff for review, like Cody said, to make sure that we adhere to the concept plan. You know, Vialobos is, you know, they want the site to look nice. They want to work with the surrounding property owners and just, yeah, really make it feel comfortable and, you know, make it look nice. I'm not sure if I answered your question there. Do you have Vialobos answer?
No, that's fine. Maybe you can ask him this question, because I'm going to ask staff, is there a note or a, something that we could put in that if they would be amenable to, that would address the caretaking of that landscaping and meet what I had just said, you know, as kind of one of the issues that I have as far as, first off, I'm kind of skeptical about ever asking someone to put in landscaping, just because I think once they meet the step of putting in landscaping, after that, it's basically anybody's game as to what happens to it, right? There's no ongoing. But if they do put it in, I want to make sure that there's a viability of it living through either irrigation or whatever.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. We actually have regulations established for this situation. It's in our maintenance standards for landscaping, and it states that living ground covers must be 50% established after the first growing season, and then 90% established thereafter. And so those are standards that they would be required to meet with their landscaping.
So we wouldn't have to put anything in?
That's correct. We already have standards in place.
Then my other question is going to be later on, when we talk about how that's enforced. Thank you for answering that.
Any other questions? And for the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone signed up or not signed up that would like to come down and speak on this matter? Anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on this case? Okay, see, and we're coming back to the board for discussion and action. Commissioner Emma Pinter.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I was looking through the detailed packet in addition to the PowerPoint, and noticed that the Health Department eval came from our prior Health Department tri-county as opposed to current staff. But in the letter, it only talked about noise and air. And I'm just kind of curious, was any evaluation done on groundwater, stormwater, or water quality on this parcel as we make this transition?
Yeah, I think I'd like to have Matt Emmons, our Development Review Engineer, come up. He was the one who did the evaluation of the drainage letter.
Thank you.
Hello, Matt Emmons, through the Community and Economic Development Department. So they're in a rezoning process right now, which does not require their engineering plans to be reviewed. But we have reviewed preliminary plans to make sure that they do have a storm outfall, that they do have the surrounding streets and everything are meeting requirements, or have the capacity they need. But they will need to submit a full engineering development site plans for their site. We will review them. That will include water quality, as well as stormwater retention.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I have no further questions.
Any other questions? Okay. Any action?
The computer needs to do the computer thing.
Okay, who would like to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion here. Yep. I move to approve, here we go. The computer caught up.
Bless you.
We're all coming back after a long weekend. PRC 2021-7, 1821 Quebec Rezone and Conditional Use, move to approve with 12 findings of fact, four conditions precedent, four conditions, and one note.
I just have a, go ahead. Just a friendly correction. It's 8121 Quebec Rezone and Conditional Use.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
So with that, I will second. Oh, okay. So, so sorry.
Commissioner Tedesco seconds it, and we vote. All right, that passes. Congratulations and good luck with your project. Beat the neighbors good. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn.